Okay, it looks like we are officially live and I appreciate everyone's patience tonight. We have encountered the joy of digital life right now in that plans A, B, and C all decided to get foiled. And we're now on our final. So if you were trying to join us on YouTube, I apologize, we weren't able to get over there, but we are on Facebook Live as far as I can tell, and we will get started. So welcome everyone tonight. My name is Rebecca Garcia and I am the president of the Nevada Parent Teachers Association, and I am incredibly excited tonight to have this discussion. Joining us tonight are Superintendent of Public Instruction Joan Ebert, as well as Mark Newbern from the State Board of Ed, Felicia Ortiz, Dr. Katie Docweiler, and then also Kalid Miller, who is the Legislative Chair for Nevada PTA. And so we'll start briefly with introductions and then move on to some questions. So first, to introduce Superintendent Ebert, you just passed your one-year mark here back in Nevada. You've had quite the eventful year, arriving in the middle of a legislative session, which was redoing the funding formula, and then now the pandemic. So definite excitement in your last year here. But although you had spent several years in New York, prior to that, you were in Clark County for 25-plus years as an educator, so you really came home to Nevada. And thank you so much for joining us tonight. And then Kalid, do you want to introduce our next guest?
So I would like to introduce Felicia Ortiz. She is an elected member of the State Board of Education and a longtime education advocate. Felicia, do you have anything you want to say?
I'd say thank you guys for giving us this opportunity and for being, going above and beyond during this pandemic to make sure that parents are not only engaged but informed and included in all of the decisions and conversations.
And then we also have Dr. Katie Docweiler, who is a nationally board-certified school psychologist and policy researcher. You also are just finishing your first year on the State Board of Ed as an appointed member. And I love in your bio that it says that you have served on the PTA board at your children's school. So we, we love having that as well. And then also Vice Chair of the State Board of Education, Mark Newbern, one of the other elected members. You have some of the longer tenure on the State Board of Education and come from the private sector, and I know frequently champion efforts in technology and STEM activities. So welcome and thank you guys for joining us tonight. So let's just jump in with the very first question for Superintendent Ebert. I'm sure you're not surprised at all that this is going to relate to school reopening during COVID-19. As, I'm sure you're not surprised, that was hot on the list of questions. So before we get into some of those submitted questions, I was hoping you could just kind of give us an overview of how Nevada is planning for reopening, what's happening at the state level versus what the districts are kind of going to be responsible for, just briefly in a nutshell, so people kind of have an idea of how that planning is working.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for the opportunity for all of us to share this evening. So, you know, all of this started, I actually go back to the first initial email that we sent out in February, asking school superintendents to start making considerations for what may come. And then literally a month later, we found out that we needed to be in a distance learning environment for all of our students. And we're not alone, this is nationally. So the September opening, everybody is working diligently, and organizations like yourself, as well as the individual school districts, you have several members that are on local teams here and statewide. So at the statewide level, we have our team of epidemiologists, as well as our health officials, both in the north and the south. Superintendents are represented there. They have been working with the national experts, looking at the environments that we want to be able to open up in, and how we're going to shift education as well. We know it's not going back to what it was on September 13th, September.
I think we all don't know what day it is, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so on March 13th. But, you know, whether it's public, at the state level, private entities, the governor's office, the superintendents, all working toward the shift that we're making. We see information coming out in phases, and so that's, we're actually hoping to have some information out here shortly. A lot of people have been asking since Phase Two of the governor's announcement just this week has been made, how does that relate to school possibly, and summer supports for our most vulnerable? So in a nutshell, at a broad stroke, everybody is working extremely hard to set those guardrails for individual districts to make those determinations on how they want to move forward.
So to follow up, then, it's more that the state will be issuing kind of those health and safety. You've used that term "guardrails" multiple times, I've heard in different presentations. So the state's kind of going to give the requirements, so to speak, and then districts will work on the individual operations plan that's specific to their area. Is that a good way to summarize it?
That is, was a great summary. Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. So then with that, one of the questions is, when can people expect an answer as to whether or not the school year will start in August or September as planned, or if there'll need to be a delay?
Well, what I would say is still, that's, that is, that definitely is a local determination as far as when school starts. If they wanted to start, we, all of them are currently under the emergency distance learning plan, and so if they wanted to start school in that methodology, then they could set the date today as we all sit here. If they want to move into a different framework, they would need to open up under, if they wanted to make plans now, and actually, let me back up, that's what I've been very clear, is that right now, we should all be building several scenarios, because we know we're going to learn more information as we move on. So if we want to open up schools locally determined, under the full-blown distance education, then there's already that process in place. If they want to look at different variations of how to bring students back into school buildings, right now, if it were today, we would operate under the current guidelines that are given by our medical professionals, the LEAP Committee, the governor's office, all of the information that we currently have. So I think in planning, putting out those scenarios is critical. And then as we get closer to school opening, making those determinations and communicating them is critical as well.
How can either at the state level or at the district level, parents participate and give feedback in the process?
Yeah, so thank you. I've had several people reach out to me when we first made the announcement on the reopening, and that's then why I issued the follow-up, because obviously, they weren't in the room when the superintendents and I had the conversation about local committees. And so went ahead and published the memo that was, information that was shared with them. I do know that around the state, several school districts have those committees in place. If, and you can't have, as we know, you can't have a committee of 100. What's important is to build a structure where everyone can have feedback. And so using, leveraging the PTA, leveraging your community groups, sending emails, information. I had folks send me saying, you know, "We were not represented." And that was great that they sent it to me, but I also made sure that their superintendent had that information as well. So when the reopening committee that we have in place, when they're ready to share, we will make sure that it goes up as a draft, and that there's feedback, and we'll ask partners such as yourself to weigh in and add your thoughts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So we have submitted questions regarding the role of the board and the Department of Education. I want to start with Vice Chair Newborn, and if other people want to chime in, please feel free. But can you please explain the difference between the State Department of Ed authority and their responsibility as compared to the local authority?
Sure. Before I do that, I'm going to, I'm going to jump on to the COVID-19 reopening, just to make sure everybody knows that next week, the State Board will be hosting as its main agenda item for its meeting, a discussion on COVID-19 with the department, districts, regional training authorities, Department of Agriculture, what could be the broadest and most detailed snapshot the public will add into where we are as a state. So just putting in that plug, we're looking at, I think we're going to see a lot of where we are next week.
What's the date and time for that, Mark? Do you know, now that I put you on the spot?
I believe it's the fourth. The meetings always start at nine.
Yes.
So with that, so the, the state, we're, we're sort of in the middle between the legislature and the districts. So when the legislature passes a law, they'll give the state the role to set the statewide policy and accountability around the new program. And our goal is to set the basic framework, the requirements, and how we're going to hold the districts accountable, because we have to set up a framework that works for 17 different districts. You know, one that may have 80-something students and one that has 320,000 students. So there's a trade-off between flexibility and accountability, so we try to create as much kind of flexibility for the districts themselves to customize. So we, we don't want to be making decisions that a teacher or a principal should be making, so we're setting the basic framework. We're a local-controlled state, so most decisions around education are made at the district level, because they're closest to the situation, allows them, you know, a principal to customize the response to the neighborhood that they're serving. So we're sort of in the middle. We don't fund education, we don't run education, but we do hold it accountable.
And just a follow-up to that question, so when it comes to the actual decisions that are being made and the impact that it has on schools, so who has what authority and accountability over things such as safety, distance learning, mental health, and student achievement?
The, the model I use is there's the what has to be done, and then the implementation, the how it, how it gets done. The state is the what, what has to get done, and the districts are the how. So that's the basic model. If you look at like mathematics, learning your multiplication tables, you know, the state says third grade student needs to learn their multiplication tables. We don't tell the teacher how to do that, and we don't tell them what curriculum to use, that's up to the local school district. So think of the state as the what, and the district as the, the operational implementation how.
And do charter schools and private schools answer to the State Board of Education or the State Department of Education?
Charters are accountable for all the same regulations. There is the state public charter authority, and they have a tight role in charters, so they're the ones that choose a state charter or reverse a state charter. So to the State Board of Education, the charter schools look like a school district. They're a local education association. So think of the, the charter authority as almost a local school board over charter schools. They all still are accountable for following our regulations. Private schools, we do authorize licensing of private schools, but that is pretty much our only role.
So this next question that came in relates to education funding, which I know is a particular area of interest for member Ortiz. So we thought that we would, call on you first to answer this. Budget, obviously, and money related to not just regular funding, but the changes or additions that may need to be made is a big topic right now. What is the plan to increase funding in districts? This person said that they feel we need more money, not less. How is receiving less this year going to affect our teachers and students? Where are the cuts going to be made? What can we do as parents to help receive more funding for our schools?
Well, first and foremost, I can't, I couldn't agree more that we can't afford to have cuts. So as most education advocates know, and I think the PTA has been really good about informing other parents about this as well, is that Nevada, according to the most recent study, which is now almost three years old, is funding at about 58% of what would be considered adequate. So the national average per pupil funding is about $13,000. We don't get anywhere near that. So we're, we're all super concerned about what this next year is going to bring for education, especially with what has happened with COVID. Of the major items on the table for the next legislation is an initiative that is, has been put forth. There's two initiatives that have been put forth by the teachers' union, one to raise local sales tax, which is a local funding stream for education. It's called the local school support tax. The other is to increase gaming tax. That, right now, is at about 6.75%. And on a national average, there's, it's usually 20% to 25%. So Nevada is one of the lower taxed gaming, or lower income, lower gaming tax states. However, given what has happened with COVID, I think that might be a harder sell this time around, since none of our casinos are open. So there, there is opportunity, and what I would recommend, there's opportunity to advocate for other funding streams, particularly funding streams that are not as economically volatile. So it mean, meaning if the economy drops, the, the revenue is not going to drop with it. Some of those are property taxes, other types of income tax, other creative funding sources. A lot of states use like a state lottery, things like that. So I think those are options that we need to consider, and I really feel like we need to consider all options at this point, and not allow our state to continue to kick the can down the road when it comes to adequately funding education. This is probably the hill I will continue to scream from for...
Yeah, and what's, what's unique, though, is that all of you who sit here on the call with us, none of you actually decide how much education is funded in Nevada. So the State Board of Education doesn't have the ability to kind of wave that magic wand and increase funding, right? And I think sometimes that's something that people don't understand.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for making that point. It's probably one of our biggest frustrations. But that decision and that, that action all comes directly from the legislature. So first and foremost, I recommend voting for people that you know are going to be strong advocates for education, because we're in the middle of election period, for the legislature specifically. Second, I would figure out ways how you can advocate for those legislators that get elected to really put a strong focus on education, and to think creatively about other ways that we could fund education that maybe Nevada hasn't thought about yet. I think that there's an opportunity in what is happening right now for us to get a little bit more creative about what we do with education. So I'm hoping that that will lead to not only more funding, but better outcomes for kids.
Thank you. And as a follow-up to Superintendent Ebert, one of the questions that was asked was specifically, how will the state help ensure that all districts have the resources that they need for the COVID response? So if there's additional PPE or, you know, personal protective gear and things like that, that are a matter of health and safety, how is there a plan for the state to assist with that?
So one of the things that we were very fortunate to receive is actually from the federal funding allocation referred to as ESAR dollars. Nevada actually received $117 million. It has been a very swift process. I'm thankful to the US Department of Education how they have shifted. We submitted our application from the state, and literally within three days, they turned around and had approved our application. So those funds actually are here currently in the state. The interim finance committee approved us to, approved the acceptance of those dollars as well as us, or to us to be able to distribute them to the school districts. So the school districts will be receiving roughly $105 million to help with this crisis, and those dollars are very flexible. They can be used for PPEs, cleaning materials, professional development for educators, all of the various pieces to support our students during this crisis.
Okay. As a follow-up to that, is, are those being distributed, they're being distributed similar to Title I funding, correct? So it's a kind of a percentage divvy out to the districts based on how many students they have, is that correct?
It's, thank you. It is based on their Title I status, so it is formula-driven. So all of the school districts will be receiving funds except for one, and that is Eureka. Now, Eureka will be able to apply for the very small portion that's left. We were able to keep 10%, and they will be able to apply for those funds. But all of the other 16, as well as the charter school authority schools, did receive, are allocated based on Title I funds.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent Ebert, can you explain why Eureka doesn't get the dollars, just because I don't know that everyone understands that?
That's true. Thank you. Yeah, so Eureka has very few students that qualify, as well as their funding based on the mining dollars that they receive. So their per pupil funding is divined first by those dollars, and then depending on how those dollars flow and are available, if there's additional funds that they need, based on the formula that follows through the DSA, there is allocation. Some years, there's no allocation from the state to that district specifically, other years, there is some dollars that are allocated.
Thank you for clarifying that. Kalid?
Thank you. My next question is for Dr. Docweiler. As a school psychologist and a mother, we wanted to talk to you about how this is impacting parents and children specifically. Students' emotional and mental health needs are a major concern expressed. I'm actually in a family full of teachers, and I have a family member who literally spends one day a week just doing a mental health check-in for their class time. And I wanted to ask you, how specifically can parents help support their children at home during the closures?
Thank you for the question, and it's, it's real. I mean, we have educators as parents, we have parents working from home, we're all doing the best that we can, and it is tough. And what I would like to offer to everybody is, it's okay, nobody knows how to do it, and there's no one right way. So just allow grace with yourself, grace with each other, and we'll get through this. And I think it's most important when we're looking at our children and as parents, that we, we do want to do what's best for them, and if the, if what we're being told that we need to do with them is one thing, but when we look at our child and say, well, that expectation's not necessarily realistic, it might be with this child, but not with this child, because every, if every individual student has, or child has their own levels of anxiety and stress, and so one child, what one child may be able to withstand another one that's like above their threshold, and it's just too much work for them. And I noticed that with my own children, you know, while we were doing school at home, and I was trying to work from home, and what was okay to do with one of my children wasn't, you know, their threshold wasn't as high as the other. So in terms of being parents and how to handle our children, we just really need to be aware of the relationships that we have with them, their level of tolerance, their thresholds, and I think most, most importantly, to support the kids, we need to, like you mentioned, take that time for self-care, because if we have stress, or the children are experiencing secondary trauma from our own personal issues, it's not going to be good for the kids. So we need to really monitor our own stresses, anxieties, and if we as the adults have any previous experience with our own mental health issues, our own traumas, we really need to monitor that so that we don't, we don't pose a secondary trauma onto our children.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, so we know that eventually, the schools are going to reopen, and I wanted to know, how do you think families and staff can prepare for back-to-school, especially with so many unknowns out there and so many fears and anxiety?
Yeah, that's tough, and what was already mentioned, we need to have Plan A, B, and C, and then maybe, I don't know, all the way down to Z. Like, we can't, we can't say there's any one right way to do this right now. One of the things that I think is critical is just to be honest with the kids, it's not going to look the same. Whatever plan we move forward with, it's not going to look the same as it did, you know, March 13th, or when we last left campuses. So being honest with them about that, and then also being, just letting them know that they're, they're safe, and their well-being is listened to, and I love that, what you mentioned, that one, one day it was just a check-in. I think that's important, that the, the kids themselves feel checked in with their educators. That's really important, and also, if there's any opportunity for educators to do one-on-one calls with students, or even with the parents and the students, whatever that looks like to keep that relationship firm, that's another good way for educators. If they have a strong relationship with the students, and they'll be able to gauge whether or not that child might be going through some mental health issues, or they may be needing some additional support, or the family itself might be needing some additional support.
Thank you.
Is it possible for Superintendent Ebert to talk a little bit about what the department of Ed has been doing with regards to telehealth in this time?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So what's exciting is that actually, prior to the pandemic, we had received a grant from the US Department of Ed. There were only five other states that received this funding to expand and support in these areas. And so we've actually been working with providers, both in the north and in the south, to start this process. And, and I actually need to give a shout-out to both of the larger two school districts who had, have been traveling down this path, but we were lucky, we have a great, our office of, you know what, I cannot do another video conference as...
I think we, we were adding up the hours, all of us had been on Zoom, go-to meetings and everything else today before we hopped on this, and I think, I appreciate you all adding an extra hour to it tonight. So, and acronyms always drive me nuts, anyway.
Right. Yes, thank you. Our O'Surly Office with, I have not forgotten my staff's name, but our director, Kristi McGill, is phenomenal, and the staff there providing supports. And we also have SafeVoice, you know, not only the, the telehealth that has been spun up and expanded since the pandemic, but if any point in time, our students, adults are not feeling safe, they can call SafeVoice, you can go to our website, look at all of those resources that are available. They've been, they've, and, and it's the community partnership, right? It's not just the, the State Department of Ed, but we work very closely with the Department of Health and Human Services, who've been doing a phenomenal job through all of this.
who've been doing a phenomenal job through all of this. You know, I'm on mental health right now, but I just need to also give a shout out to our ag department with the food service. When we first went into this, literally, they had, you know, 24 hours and now they've served over 2 million meals across the state. And it's, it's all of our support staff, bus drivers, you know, principals, community coming together and, and making it happen. It's crowdsourcing ideas on, on support and leveraging the talent that exists here in Nevada already. And, you know, as, as my board members have noted, you know, I don't know anybody else that's in, well, excuse me, except for the one gal who's 100 years old. I love her commercial. She talks about when she was born in the
Oh, yeah.
last pandemic. But we're experiencing something that, that we haven't experienced and we're building in the future. And so we need to give ourselves permission to, it's okay. You know, we're not going to be all perfectly laid out like we normally are. We're going to do the best that we can each and every day, but it's incumbent to listen to everyone. I wrote a little note, student voice as well, asking our students, you know, what do they see as solutions? And, you know, our parents, our students, our electeds, our public-private, everybody needs to be involved to, to create what, what, what the future is going to hold for us. I, I really think, I was even driving into work today and just, you know, five, just looking five years from now, what are the students going to say, how the adults reacted to this situation and their educational environment? Hopefully, they'll say it's all great.
Hopefully. I was thinking too, we had the opportunity to talk with Michelle Trujillo about social emotional learning and how parents can help support their kids. So if you're on the Nevada PTA Facebook page, we did a live with her recently and they really got to delve into that too. And I found she was a great resource.
Right. Could I take another comment about the mental health real quick?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, there's several opportunities right now. It's really exciting actually because everyone does recognize the mental health of our students is going to be a big issue. So there's recently, I think just today, a new federal grant came out that states can apply for to increase the school-based mental health professionals, the number of professionals working in the field. So that's super exciting. And then another opportunity available to districts is to include their school-based mental health state associations on their reopening plans. That includes school social workers, school psychologists and school counselors because they can be a great service to those districts and what that might look like in the fall, whether or not, maybe even, it's especially important in all the districts, but in the smaller districts where they may, may not have each of those three professions, they can access the associations and have that knowledge base to draw from. And then in addition to Safe Voice, I would also recommend contacting the Mobile Crisis Response Team. And they service all parts of Nevada, northern, southern, and the rural. So we can also post those phone numbers on the Facebook page so that people can have access to that.
That would be awesome. I appreciate that. Because I do think, you know, that is the one thing I've found coming to Nevada and getting out into the state. We are such a large diverse state. So getting multiple resources out, I think, is really important. So that whether you're in a small mining community or you're in downtown Las Vegas, you know, kids have, and families have the support that they need. I'm going to jump in with a couple of questions that have come in from the feed, from viewers. One is for Superintendent Ebert regarding, kind of for clarification on reopening of schools. With the, like, what, can you clarify maybe more on what discretion a district has on reopening? Obviously, districts have set their own calendars for years. So we have some that open before Labor Day. We have some that open after Labor Day. You know, that calendar issue has been unique. But will, will everyone have to abide by whatever the governor says from a sense of the size of gatherings and whether buildings are open, that type of thing? Does there have to be clearance first in order to, to go back in buildings?
Thank you for the clarifying question. So the construct of what happens within the building will be based on the state guidance and regulations. So we know that in Phase Two, which was just announced, we went from a gathering of 10, right, no more than 10, in a, in a public space to 50. And also too, at the same time, there was consideration about public spaces, such as restaurants, not having more than 50% occupancy. And so what happened immediately is some people said, well, can I go to my school building then and have just 50% occupancy? And the answer is no, you know, in those larger spaces, and it's no more than 50. And so that's in building those plans and looking at, you know, Plan A fully, fully online to Plan Z, you know, back to school. We need to be cognizant that as we learn more and as, as more phases roll out. And the thing is, is we know that this is an invisible deadly pandemic, right, that we're in. And so we need to be keeping our children safe. And we need to learn each and every day from what is happening within our communities and how, you know, I'm really thankful that everything went well with Phase One. And so now we hope that Phase Two will see just as much success. People, you know, I, I think now it's actually, you know, we've had some stuff here in our own building, the social distancing. Now, I didn't think I'd ever get used to it because I'm a hugger. I love, I love hugging. I love, you know, being around people. But now, you know, I, I noticed today, I was talking to someone, it's almost natural that we're six feet apart. And that we keep, you know, we don't hold, we're used to holding doors open for each other. We're not doing that anymore because that's less than six feet. So long story short is yes, we will be following the guidelines that are given out at the state, but we need, we need to be cognizant that they will change as we move forward.
Okay. Another question, and I'm guessing this is mostly from Superintendent, for Superintendent Ebert, but also I know Katie, you have quite a bit of special education background as well in your role. The question was relating to their child who hasn't received the special education services because of the closures and because of the challenges with getting those delivered. Can you describe the obligations that a school has to provide special education services right now? And what will be required from districts to account for what they're doing and what steps will be taken as we go into 2021 with potential funding cuts and the need to also address special education shortcomings?
Yeah, so we're, so based on the individual student and their IEP, some students have still been able to receive some of their services. We, via video conferencing and phone calls and whatnot. We also have the other end of the spectrum where those services cannot be provided at a distance. And so the school districts each are to be in contact with those families, having those conversations. And those students will have access when we can go back into those buildings. You know, we have some highly specialized equipment in our school districts for some students. So those students will still have those services over time. And so that is not only state, but federal requirements and laws. But first and foremost, I would want to make sure that every parent, whether differently-abled parents or not, is in contact with their principal and has an understanding of what the guidelines are from the federal government and the state to those services. So contact your school, make sure you're having those conversations. And there is a process, if they do not feel that those services are, are being provided, there is a process that we can work through to make sure that everyone is on the same page and has an understanding based on our pandemic.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, Kalie.
All right. So of course, we have to come back to the topic of money. So on funding, especially moving forward, what is being done to ensure that the money from the Rady Day Fund and the CARES Act will be used first and foremost to fill education funding gaps? Let's not all jump in at once.
I'll take that one. So, so the Rady Day Fund has already been, it's gone. So, um, there's no more Rady Day Fund. So that's first and foremost. So as far as the CARES Act money goes, as Superintendent Ebert said, there is wide flexibility in what the school districts can use that for. So how that money is distributed to the schools, we've already talked about. There's 105 million that's going to come down to school districts. The school districts have some pretty wide lanes on what they can use that money for. I know that CCSD was planning on using a good chunk of that money to address the technology needs. But there will be inevitably a lot of other needs. And I don't think the money from the CARES Act will be anywhere near what we actually need. Does that answer the question, Kalie?
It absolutely does. And I do agree with you. And speaking of the fact that there are going to be massive, or what feels like massive budget cuts, does anybody want to speak on how this is going to impact our Zoom and Victory Schools and our most vulnerable populations?
So I'll, I'll add a little bit to that. From what I understand right now, and Superintendent Ebert, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, I think we lost you, Felicia, or maybe that's just me.
No, she froze in there as well.
Somebody else want to jump in? Because I think Felicia is frozen.
Sure. Did you, um, I, I heard part of, and then she stopped. Where would you like me to pick up from the question?
How, we, I really wanted to know how the budget cuts are going to impact our Zoom and Victory Schools, SB 178, and just our vulnerable populations.
Right. So, um, you know, hopefully, not something that people are looking forward to, but having an understanding of where we are at the state. And we know that the majority of the budget is K-12, higher ed, and Medicaid. So the, all of those three make up a large portion. And when you look at the unfortunate situation that we're in in our state, you know, almost unemployed and the shutdown. And whereas remember Ortiz was talking earlier, where, where we obtain most of our dollars. So that has, you know, shut off. And looking at the budget, I'm, I'm very thankful that the governor has education top of mind and is one of his top priorities. And so looking across and the thought process that we have been working with when I talk with the superintendents is to make sure that whatever transpires, that those reductions, when we have an understanding of what they are, that the superintendents have the flexibility to meet the needs of their students. So, you know, as, as we learn more about what those actual reductions will be, the construct is to make sure that there's flexibility so that matching what they have in their budget, you know, from the DSA with, with the CARES dollars that are coming in, that they can move forward with programming.
Thank you.
Am I back?
You're back. Yes, you're back.
Okay. So I'll, I'll just add a little to that. To Mark's point earlier, right, it's, it's a local control state and the school districts decide the how. So I, I believe that majority of those budget decisions are going to happen at the district level. So the, the state will most likely say, you know, this is our total need, right? 10% cut across the board or whatever. And then school districts will have to decide how they're going to come up with that 10% savings in their budgets. So I think this is a huge opportunity for school districts to prove to us that they have their priorities straight. So if they don't prioritize delivering services and programming to our most understerved students via Zoom, Victory, or any other program, that will be a clear indication where their priorities lie.
This next question is kind of a compilation of several that we received. Obviously, top of mind right now are, are staff that are healthcare, you know, school nurses, mental health, like Dr. Doc Wilder talked about, our school counselors, our school psychologists. Those are really in everybody's mind as we go back. One of the things that those of us who are sitting here in this meeting, we know that Nevada has some very high ratios in all of those positions. So that means that, you know, there's nurses covering multiple schools. There are school psychologists that are already behind on all the stuff that they had to be doing way before a worldwide pandemic. And so, you know, how, how do you think both from an immediate standpoint, some of those things can be addressed with what exists in Nevada right now? And also from a policy aspect for the State Board of Education, what do you guys think can be done to strengthen some of those supportive services that are in schools? Also thinking of FASAs, you know, one of the questions that we had. In, you know, my kid's school, it's, I, I rarely ever see a nurse, always a FASA, who has, quite frankly, limited training. And yet that might be the person who's deciding whether or not somebody has COVID and should go home. And so for some families, that becomes, so from a staffing ratios, this is a huge question. So definitely, multiple people can weigh in, but you know, how do we address this immediately? And how do we look at the policy needs and maybe even training included in those policies so that we have qualified people to help kids?
Rebecca, that is a very complex question.
Yeah.
You're right, there is no simple answer. So most immediately, I would like to remind everybody that we did recently pass the recommended ratios for our specialized instructional support personnel. So that does include all those professions that you just mentioned. And those are recommended at the state level. So it's up to the districts now to figure out how they're going to begin attaining those ratios. So the districts have, in Senate Bill 89 from the 2019 legislative session, there's a piece of that bill that says districts must come up with a 15-year ratio improvement plan. So there's some things that can be done immediately, but looking at the long term, it's, it's, it's kind of unrealistic to assume that tomorrow we'll wake up and then have all these great ratios met, right? Like, that's just not possible. So one thing that I think we need to do is partner with the Nevada System of Higher Education. We need to increase our training programs. We need to recruit from within. We have teacher pipelines. We can have school-based mental health pipelines. A lot of these models are already in place. We just need to carry them over into, into the mental health professions for schools. Also creating stack degree programs. There's a lot of different ways that we can create career ladders for the school-based mental health professions as well. And then in terms of policy, what we can do at the state level and what can be done at the district level, to Mark's point, the how and the, how and the, the what, those are two different things. And so those would be certainly things that the state needs to consider specifically with terms to cost. Because if we're going to be setting specific ratios, and then there's going to be costs associated with that at all levels.
A quick little reminder for those of you that didn't watch our last board meeting. The ratios that we recommended are non-binding, like we can't enforce them right now because we're not providing dollars to go with them, unfortunately. But we did ask that the Department of Ed calculate what the cost of hitting those ratios would be, given our current staffing and the total cost for us to hit the recommended ratios, which is still in some cases 500 students to one provider, be it a social worker, psychologist, was $254 million. That's three times what we're just getting from CARES, which is an awful lot of money. So when you, going back to our early, earlier conversation on funding, we absolutely need to advocate for more.
Well, this great opportunity that came up from the federal government might be a good way to incrementally start working towards that if we were if we were to, you know, apply and get that grant, so.
We'll see. Anybody else want to jump in on that question? I know it was a big one. I guess I would ask a follow-up too. Like, are those considerations with, and I don't, I don't know that the term FASA is district-wide. That's the First Aid Safety Assistant in the Health Office. That is definitely what it's called in CCSD. Like, is that one of, is additional training for that role something that would be considered by the state reopening committee?
So Rebecca, let me just give you a quick little clarification on FASA in CCSD. When I was working in the reorganization, like Oversight Committee, I learned that the reason that there's a FASA in every school is because there was a lawsuit 20 years ago that, you know, somebody gave a kid the wrong medication, the school was sued, and so the lawsuits, because of the lawsuit, they now put one of those FASAs in every single school. I thought, you just taught me something today, that that was actually a registered nurse, and it's clearly not. So, yeah, definitely need to do some work there. But that's not something that comes from the state. That is a district decision.
I guess, though, the question would be, though, is there some sort of consideration in the reopening plan of what health professional would need to be monitoring the situation at each campus across the state? Like, is that a discussion point? Or something that's being considered in the reopening framework that the state is working on, Superintendent Ebert?
Thank you. So the, first of all, when I first returned, and, you know, this is my first job at the state level in Nevada, but I was also in New York. And I turned to my staff and said, forget what it was, during the legislative session and talking about immunizations. And I said, who on my staff works with all the nurses across the state of Nevada? And turned around, and there wasn't anybody. And so I said, Kristi, you're it. And thank God she took the ball. And so we've been now having more conversations, she meets with them monthly. I will tell you that we do not have nurses in every single school across the state. When we, when this first transpired, having conversations across the state of, you know, do you all have thermometers? Some did, and they happen to be still thermometers that had mercury in them. So there's a lot of things that, in Nevada, that we accelerate in. And there are places where we have a lot of work to do. I can tell you that the leaders, I, I, leaders, I cannot say enough for the superintendents and the Charter School Authority, Rebecca Fiden. They have, are carrying a heavy lift. Everyone is in the system, the principals. But they are working extremely hard to lift up our state. We've got private entities that are also looking for PPEs for our school districts. So all of that, continue to make sure that we gather our resources and gather an understanding of what we have and what we need, and then build that plan out to, so that we can clearly see the steps that we need to take. You know, the board, as you said, took the non-binding recommendation, but they were very, we did the presentation once, and they wanted the actual dollar amount. And I agreed, we went back and did the work on the dollar amount to attain those positions. So having an understanding of where you need to be and then setting the plan on how you get there. It's not going to be a flip overnight. We didn't get where we are overnight. This is how we have built Nevada for a very long time. And now we need to rebuild so that we can move forward, especially in education.
Well, thank you so much. We are out of time. Do, does everyone have time for one final question? I know we were a minute late, get, started it then. Colleen, you can ask our final question.
Actually, this is a question that I was literally just thinking of. So let's say that we reopen our schools, and a, a child or a teacher finds out that they have COVID. Who will be responsible for implementing the procedure that we take in the classroom after that point? And what do you think that procedure should look like?
So we, as a state, already have procedures in place. When students are, have been identified with whooping cough, you know, schools are closed down, the community is notified, the buildings are cleaned. That timeline is two days at this point in time. So taking that same protocol, and, but we're going to need to expand it. So that's something that we're working with medical professionals on. And, you know, expect to see a lot of guidance in that, in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in on this one. So again, there's, you know, there's sort of the state's responsibility and the local school district's responsibility. And these gens that Buddy is looking at now, the school districts, the state, not, it's literally everybody in the nation around the world, and there are a lot of ideas. There's just virtually no actual pandemic experience in implementing the ideas. So a lot of our success is going to be around, you know, what happens if a student, you know, what barriers are we setting up within the school? Are students always confined to the same group of students within the same rooms? So there's, there's going to be a lot of implementation details around what happens. How much do you have to close down? And, you know, what sort of contact tracing? What sort of follow-on testing's going to occur? I mean, these are all the things that we're trying to pin down now. But we're going to learn, and the whole world is going to learn here this fall. So I know Buddy wants to know all the answers now, but a lot of this is just unknowable right now. The whole world is about to engage in an experiment in opening up schools over this coming fall.
Well, thank you all for taking the time to join us tonight. Hopefully, we can do more of these discussions. I think that's the one positive aspect of the closures is that we've all transitioned to virtual events. And that has actually, I think, increased opportunities for dialogue. And so we appreciate you guys taking the time and adding an extra virtual meeting on the end of an already full day. And we will have this recording available on our website as well within the next day or so. And just thank you for all you do for Nevada's students and families and educators. Have a great night.
Thank you so much, everybody. Good night.